And this is a joint CRC Council meeting and Jenny would normally run that as Council President. Bill, do you feel comfortable doing so? Githens?
I mean, we're here to listen and hear what CRC has to say, so I would say it's their show, so.
Bill, this is Rich. I think traditionally when it's a joint meeting like this, whoever is chairing the council, at least would chair the meeting. I understand it was made in terms of input and participation, but I think, and Karen, I believe, is going to act as the recording secretary and also if there are any votes taken to do the role.
Okay. Then yes, if you want me to chair because of the council. Karen, can we have a roll call?
Yep, Mr. Clevinger.
Here.
Bill Githens.
Here.
Sally Ratchardi.
Rich West.
Here.
Paul De Benedictus.
Present.
Sue McInturf.
Here.
Tommy Uhas.
Here.
Karen Schuman.
Here.
Okay, all being present. I think the crux of the matter, can I go ahead and turn it over to Rich? For his comments on the CRC and what we're here for?
I think when the special meeting was suggested and agreed to at the council meeting last Tuesday, it was the urgency that required such a short date meeting was the commitment that Jonathan needed to make on behalf of the town for the matching funds for the Phase Three of the trail project. So Jonathan, do you want to talk maybe about that? Sorry, I gotta close my window here.
Yeah, I'm trying to get that up on everybody's screen. Can you all see that?
Yes.
So, one second. Rich sent that out, and that's just a snippet from what I presented at council on Tuesday. And I will, I forgot to mention it, recording, if you're not speaking, if you're on the phone, if you hear a little reverb, if you could mute your phones if you're not speaking or you're speaker. So, the question that I put before council on Tuesday, or the information, was regarding a next phase of trails over. One of the Marshall County community, the community stellar application, the regional stellar application, one of our projects that was awarded, that is eligible for funding, is the next phase of trail. So hopefully you guys can see that on the graphic. The idea, the next phase there are the blue dots. Zoom a little here. So the idea is tying in existing projects. So on the right side there, you can see Lake Max Trail, Phase Two, which is already funded and will start construction next year. That's the one that runs through town, the bulk of it on Main Street, through the south end of town, and then connecting up to the park on Washington. So we're connecting into that along Jefferson Street. Then we've also got the Jefferson Street Improvement Project. There's also a stellar project that'll have combined trail on the north end of the street there coming into town. There are a couple blocks. You can see that we weren't able to connect that originally, so this project would tie those together. And then we would also run north, going up Slate Street and connect to Culver Elementary School, and out Cass Street then to San Hill Farms on the north end of that development. So that's the plan right now. Let me zoom back out and I'll go over the budget a little bit. So, you know, this is early on, it's just, the actual plan will still be in development, obviously, but what we're looking at in terms of the plan financially over the next few years would be preliminary engineering would start, start to take place this summer or fall. That's estimated to be about $100,000. We do anticipate this project would likely have one or two parcels that may require right-of-way, so we're putting in a budget of $12,000 for that. Most of that's just kind of the process of doing it, the administrative fees that go along with it. The actual construction component, we'd be looking at 256,000, and then to have someone onsite inspecting as it goes along, that's our construction inspection fee. It would be about 32,000. So out of the county's total stellar award, they had basically set aside 400,000 for this project for us, so we're trying to stick to that budget. There, it's an indot project, so it's an 80/20. The federal funds will go towards 80% of the project. We'd have a local match of 20%. And then it's kind of, you can see on the timeline there, kind of the second tab in, when we would anticipate those funds. So engineering, like I said, would take place over the next few years. It would be the first expense we would really get into. Wouldn't anticipate anything beyond that until March of 2023. And then the big one would be construction, when that would take place, which would probably be 2024 or 2025. We won't know for sure even on that until the application's accepted by indot and they give us a year. That's just kind of what they've been telling us so far. So the total local match for the $400,000 project is $80,000. I think that's a pretty good overview of the project in general, what the finances look like, where it is, that kind of stuff. The reason for the joint meeting was that, you know, CRC has been very generous in supporting trail efforts in Towne Culver over the last few years, particularly when it comes to a grant match like this, where it's an 80/20, where the federal funding's paying for 80% of it. This is a project that I do think would benefit the Tiff District, touches along there in multiple cases, and really ties all those projects together, increases connectivity to the school, as well as, you know, downtown new developments on the west end of town, and then running to the phase of the trail development that'll go towards Culver Academies as well. So just saying it gets a nice tie-in through the downtown, and wanted to put it on your agenda for tonight for consideration. I have not done the cash flow and budgeting and that type of thing. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, Rich?
No, you said it's $80,000 over four years, no correction?
Yes.
Yeah.
With the bulk of it, probably 2024 or 2025.
Okay. All right, and as you said, this does fall well within the scope of what we have done and is in the Tiff Districts, connecting the Tiff Districts, the housing development that we helped to support, and the schools, obviously. So, I don't know, any questions, input from CRC members?
Looks like Karen had her hand up, is that right?
Yeah, I have a question. So is there a construction design as far as, is it separated pathway? Or is it just designated paint pathway?
Sure, so at this price level and what we're expecting, it would be majority separated, combined bike and pedestrian trail. Now, you know, once you get into the Phase One preliminary engineering over that first year or so, that's when you'll know for sure. I always keep ADA compliant sidewalks along with four-foot on-street bicycle lanes. It's kind of a backup plan, and worst-case scenario is kind of shared. You know, basically just share-the-road-type markings on the street signs. I don't think it'll be an issue with this one. We've looked at it. I've looked at it with Mike Reese from Troy Group, and we're fairly confident it will be 100% separated trail, but until you get the surveys done and really dig into that engineering is, you can't really guarantee.
Because my other question would be, would we want to continue it to the high school? And I know that probably isn't within the budget or is already considered, but just asking.
Yeah, just for the record, on the application itself, Karen, that's the way I applied for it. So I've extended the scope to go, I believe, all the way up to, can't remember if it's college or academy now. I'm assuming it's academy, but, so in the application itself, I've actually had a little bit longer scope of work. Budget-wise, I don't think we'll be able to go that far, but if by some case we are, indots often picky about, once you've applied for a certain location, they won't let you expand that later. So I'm trying to err on the side of the caution in the application, and if we are able to go that further distance, ideally, I'd love to see it go that far.
But 2024 would be that potential construction time, so if there was something, we could contribute or look into that connection. Kind of like how we're doing with the park right now and our parking lot, kind of, right? We could...
Right, there's always the opportunity to do a local project separately that extends it as well.
Okay.
Rich, this is Tom.
Go ahead, Tom.
Um, so we're committing 20,000 a year over the next four years. Is that correct?
That's what the town's, that's what the total commitment is from the town and CRC. So the question tonight is, what I think, what does CRC think is a fair share of their contribution toward this project?
Okay, and is there a given year where if the local funds, like this construction phase, when the construction phase, it says it's 51,000 is the local funds, will we have to double up our payment that year? Is our commitments, is it 2020/20 for four years?
So I'll answer that one, Tom. So right, if you look, that second tab is telling you which year we expect those fees to run through. So like preliminary engineering will be fees over a course of three years. So it won't be even, no. It'll be, the first year is probably 10,000 or less. The second year is probably the same. Once you actually get into construction, you'll probably see 80% of the funds, so it'll be more like, you know, 10, 10, 65 or something like that, you know? It'll definitely hit more that last year.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at, just from a budgeting standpoint, that there's going to be one year where it's not going to be 20, but there's other years it's not going to be 20 on the low side.
Correct.
That's fine.
This is Bill Githens. Rich, do you have a proposal? Or is there a proposal out there as to the split between CRC and the town?
This is the first discussion we've had about it, Bill. The project just came up on Tuesday, and Jonathan's need to get a letter of commitment out, I think is what prompted this meeting. So we haven't had any prior discussion on this project. Any other, Sue, Sally, Paul?
This is Paul. I do have a question. Jonathan, I realize the town may run, you know, the town committed the 80,000, and CRC may be able to participate in that. What do you need in the near term? I mean, we have no idea what budgets look like going forward, but what do you need in the near term to take this forward and a commitment from our side? What Bill is out there right now?
I'm trying to think, like, so as part of the county application, if I remember right, I think the way we worded our commitment letters this year were, or this, last year, I think you guys were at least aware of them, so we didn't say who was going to pay an exact amount, but I think if I remember right, we put that on your agenda, so you were aware that we were committing to make the matches to those two projects. And so there's another project that, again, there's basically a county set aside for us through the Marshall County Stellar Award for $600,000 for a park project. I anticipate that one to be more town-focused in terms of funding. I would like to see CRC, I think this one's a clear one, where you guys don't have any, you know, legal concerns or anything like that funding it, and it's, I think if you're going to pick between the two projects, I would say take this one in terms of redevelopment match.
Would this?
I don't know. Sorry.
Would this help the town right now in cash flow?
Like you said, I mean, it is difficult to predict where any of us are going to be with the bulk of this likely coming out in 2024. If we had to pay for it right now, yeah, it would be a concern. Mainly, I think these are things we can work out if it comes to 2024, but as Rich mentioned, so we sent a letter in the county application saying we're willing to make these matches. And that's basically all it says, is we're committed to making these matches. Now, the application I was talking about with Karen, where I'm getting into the actual description of the the site of how far it extends and all that kind of stuff. The next step is they want a letter, again, kind of clarifying that in a little more detail. So now we've got a budget of each year of the match we're expected to make, and I would like to be able to put that level of detail in it as far as who's making that commitment at this point. It'll, I think, allows all of us to kind of plan for that, but also knowing that, you know, situations arise where we have to make adjustments, that's okay too, but we've got a plan for financing it.
Sue or Sally, any comments or questions?
No, I think I pretty much understand.
No, no comments, questions?
Okay, I think if we look at our cash flow statement, and I had updated that based upon the claims today and circulated it, I don't think we have any present concerns about cash flow on this. Any other council members? I try it, Bill, if you want to take it back to Chair?
Well, I'm, you know, along those lines, I'm, as I always get worried about unfunded commitments, so if you're saying there's no worries, that, you know, I can rest assured that, you know, you've looked at it and you're telling us that there is no immediate danger and that significant funds are in place and over the next couple of years, you know, matches can be made. Makes sense?
Makes sense to me. Either Karen or Jonathan or Bill as the chair in terms of procedure on this, if CRC were to make a commitment, I guess, would it be at our following, the meeting following this? Or, you know, what type of votes can we take here that would make sense if we had a motion on the floor?
It was advertised as a special meeting, so either group can make a motion and make a decision at this meeting, if you so desire.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Karen, is that separate or independently or, you know, collectively?
Well, I would think the council would make a decision for the council, and the CRC would make a decision on CRC.
All right.
Okay, well, I'll make it easy. I'll make the motion that CRC fund the 80,000 over four-year period for Phase Three of the Lake Max Trail.
We have a CRC motion by Tom Uhas to fund the matching grant for the Phase Three trail project. Is there a second for that motion?
This is Sue, I'll second.
Okay, so well, the motion that's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, remove the question. Karen, could you take the role, please, of CRC?
Mr. De Benedictus?
Aye.
Ms. McInturf?
Aye.
Ms. Ratchardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Mr. Uhas?
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, everyone. Bill, do you want to, should we have a council? I would make a motion on behalf of the council that we authorize Jonathan to write a letter of commitment detailing the decision that has been made.
Hey, council members, do we have a motion to authorize Jonathan to write a letter on behalf of CRC to set forth the commitment on this project? Is there a motion?
I just made that, Bill, I think.
Okay, well, council has to make it. You see what I'm saying?
He is council.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, we got, we got too many people on both boards. My apology.
That's all right.
Is there a second to that, to Rich's motion?
This is Sally, Ratchardi, I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made by Rich and seconded by Sally, that the council authorized CRC, Jonathan on behalf of CRC, to so notate the match for this part of the trail project. Is there any discussion? Karen, would you please call, roll?
Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Ms. Ratchardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Motion carries. Sorry for the confusion, but this is the first time I've done a joint one like this, and I don't think this is all that unusual, but it's unusual for me tonight, so. Speaking on behalf of council, I do appreciate, you know, what CRC is doing, and, you know, it's, these trails are important, and it sure is going to help with tourism.
Well, especially now that we're a walking community.
That's correct. Okay, is this all that we need to discuss in the joint part of the meetings, or do you want us to stick around, or?
Well, it's...
You've got a little bit of...
No, go ahead, Jonathan, someone.
I was just going to say, the only other topic, and I don't know how, probably don't want to get too far into it today, but originally, I think we had hoped to do some public input, and we still need to, but I know the other big thing that I think we'd like to address this spring or summer is Evil Check Building, which we purchased basically for the coal and costs last year, and had been looking at for different options. It is in the Tiff District, would love to have either a joint meeting or just even kind of ideas on where to start with that. I've got some thoughts and different things we've talked about, but I'm not sure the best, I guess, route to go in the near future with it. I just don't want the building to fall over in the meantime, so just something keep on the back burner. I'm open to thoughts or suggestions on how to handle that.
Well, I know Jenny, excuse me, I know Jenny had talked about, you know, having a work session or, and, you know, getting town input, whether it be by survey or, you know, work session. I certainly think that's something that merits...
I would agree, a work session, I think, would probably be the appropriate forum, and maybe before or after, maybe probably before a public meeting or survey.
Okay. Yeah, right, I guess I'm not sure what, all to include on that survey at this point, so I think that'd be good if we get that fleshed out and then move to the survey and some public input. Again, I don't know, it may be mostly online still this summer, I'm not sure. I'll have to figure out, I guess the best way to do that this year.
When will all the playground equipment be out of Evil Check, and when will the remainder of the brewery equipment be out? Do you know?
Uh, no, that's a good question. I have not talked to the owner of the brewery equipment lately. I will make sure to do that this week, because that's way past.
Yeah, I know, I've had, you know, just casual conversations with him, and, you know, I think he wants to get it out of there, but from my conversations, I don't think he knows where he's going to put it right now.
Yeah.
So if anybody else has any information, go ahead.
I would think if, I would think we might want to give a deadline or look at a revenue opportunity to rent the space for storage.
Yeah.
If it's not out by a certain time period. Jonathan, do you have a timeline in your head as far as that project goes, which could sort of backing up into when we need to do a work session?
It really, so much of it depends. I think there's really a broad array of options there, that it really depends on which we're heading. I just, I, there's been some talk about trying to maintain that structure and use that. If that's at all on the table, I just think it needs to be sooner rather than later. That's my biggest concern, is if we want to still be able to use the building after it's resummed.
We need to get it cleaned out first, so should we set a deadline and send it later? July 1, or, you know, pick a date. I'm just throwing July 1 out there.
I think that's more than fair, Bill, I think. I think that's fine.
Do we need a motion from council to direct Jonathan to write that letter and put that July 1 date on there as a, you know, the brewing equipment needs to be out of there? If we do, I'll accept a motion.
Sally, I'll...
Okay, is there a second to Sally's motion?
Sorry, I was muted. I said I would second that, Bill.
Okay, thank you, Rich. So a motion's been made by Sally and seconded by Rich that we authorize Jonathan to write a letter to the fellow that has bought the brewing equipment out of Evil Check to have all out of there by July 1 of 2020. That's the motion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevinger? Mr. Clevinger? All right, Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Ms. Ratchardi? Mr. West?
Aye.
All right, passes with three eyes.
Motion carries with three eyes. Anything else you want to discuss about Evil Check for now, Jonathan, or just, I think we got to get it empty first, and then I definitely have the playground equipment out of there by then. I would hope so. We'll have an empty building.
Tom, do you want to introduce?
Good, Rich.
No, I just, I thought if we were finished with this, and we still have some time, I think Tom had a, something he was going to introduce at CRC, but this might be a more appropriate or just as appropriate a forum, as long as we have time.
Sure.
I've been made aware that Hammer's Garage is going to go up for auction, and I know in the past CRC had thought of possibly purchasing that, donating it to the town, future parking lot type thing, because I think, Rich, you'll help me with this, but I think there were obviously some green, is it called greenfield issues, that there would be problems with trying to build on that property. But I don't have any particulars as to when this auction's going to happen, if it's in the next month or two months or six months, but I've been informed that it will go to auction sometime in the near future. So I just wanted to give the town and CRC a heads-up that if it's something that would be on our radar, that we're interested in doing, would the town have an interest in it? And would it be something that the CRC would be willing to make the investment into going into an auction on this? So I have no idea what kind of numbers are involved or anything. All I know is that I've been told it will go up for auction. have no idea what kind of numbers are involved or anything. All, all I know is that I've been told it will go up for auction.
I think it's worth looking into. I, I mean, it's, it's way, way too early to make, I think, to make a commitment on it, and I don't know whether, I'm not sure what is the right color, whether it's greenfield or round field. Contaminated, potential contaminated soil there. Um, the new owner is going to be responsible for cleaning it up, even if you just make it a parking lot, I suspect. So, Tom, do you want to maybe dig in, we'll get some more information on this and then bring it back to a, a future CRC meeting, is that-
Yeah, absolutely. As I, as I find anything out, I, I've been told that the auctioneer would be Oak Crest Auctions, which is Sam Goble, uh, of Remax in Plymouth. So I haven't gone on a website, I haven't made any phone calls, but, um, as I find out more information, I will bring it to CRC, but I just wanted to bring it to, since we had this joint meeting to, because it would really involve both entities, um, if it's something that there's an interest on both sides that, um, we need, uh, at least be aware of it.
Well, Tom, this is Bill. I think we always have an interest when a piece of property, you know, within town limits becomes available, particularly at an auction. And fortunately, uh, Sam Goble is very well-known and very reputable and very easy to get information from, and, uh, that, that's great news to hear.
Jonathan, is there a resource or way that we can explore the, um, the currents about the soil, to see what?
Yeah, yeah, uh, MACOG, I believe they still have someone on staff that can do a little bit of preliminary research, and I think she actually already has, because um, I think an interested seller contacted me a couple months ago and she did a little bit of free work on it. I don't know that she sent it all to me, but I can easily, uh, follow back up with her and, and see what she knows and what else she could find out. Especially if it's a property we think we're going to acquire. Um, I know she's offered to do, uh, more research on them.
Well, I'm in favor of whatever information we can get, so.
Okay, what, um, Tom, we can, you and Jonathan, I can talk offline on this and, and put together a, a game plan to gather information and bring it back for our, our June meeting. Or earlier, if it's, uh, if it looks like there's something developing sooner, so.
Sounds good.
Jonathan, did you want to, um, talk a little bit, as long as we've got some time, um, about the, um, the other park project that is part of the County Stellar? And I mean, I know it's not, it's concrete, but there are some ideas that have been discussed and-
Yeah.
And it needs to share those. I don't think we're looking for a commitment today, but having the information to think about may be helpful.
Yeah, um, the park project, uh, that was included in the county application was centered around, uh, basically kind of behind the depot and over by the pavilion in that area. There's a wood playground structure and some other playground pieces kind of closer to the parking lot. So it was all improvement centered around that area. The design in the application, uh, in the county application, it included kind of a, uh, more of a finished seating area, some, some, uh, almost like porch-style swings along a walk, a walk that connected, uh, the parking lot and the back of, um, the depot to the pavilion. Um, and, and kind of another gathering area down there where you could have another, I don't know, small concert or just any kind of, uh, gathering there at that end. I think it, it would have worked well with, uh, um, also still having the farmer's market in that area, allow for some tents to kind of set up outside the pavilion as they do now and still kind of flow through there. Um, but then it also had a new playground set up, um, so removing the existing one, which doesn't have a lot of life left in it, um, and, and doing a new playground up there.
Was there a water piece to this?
No, no, there's a slide, so there, uh, as you go closer to the lake, then, you know, it's a pretty steep drop off there, so they were going to do some kind of build-in features, taking advantage of that topography and do a slide that would go down that hill down towards the water, but it wouldn't, you know, uh, launch you actually out into the lake or anything. Uh, I, I have a copy of it and, and they've set aside up to $600,000, so, um, whatever the 20% match on that would be is what, uh, will end up as our local. I did, uh, since it was so close to the Lions Club, as we were kind of working on the design and we didn't do a big public input thing on it, because it's not the actual application yet, it was just kind of in the county plan. And it was not particularly well-received at Lions Club, uh, just because of the changes around the building that they use and how it would affect their views and things like that. Uh, so, to me, I'd still like to see that playground equipment component of it, uh, move forward. I, I do think that playground area there, um, is in pretty bad shape and, uh, we, we get complaints sometimes from parents about having some of the playground equipment, uh, that close to the parking lot, so the idea would be to, if there's any pieces from that, we want to move, kind of move those all together in one location where that wooden playground is now. Replace the bad stuff and, and keep the good stuff. Playground equipment's expensive, so, but I do think there's some room to still do a little more public input on it and probably make some changes that I think everyone would like a little bit more than what was originally drawn. So that's kind of where I am with that one. I think it needs a little bit of tweaking before even turning in an application to Ocre. The, the only difference is, uh, the budget turnaround on an Ocre project, once it's submitted, you know, they want you to then essentially start and start construction within like, you know, a year versus NDOT, they don't have money until four years from now, so that's just a, a budgeting thing, but.
Jonathan, is there, is there then funding that's set aside specifically for this park project through the County Stellar Plan?
Yeah, just, just like our trail project, um, as part of the application, they did kind of tell us upfront how much funding's going to be available in each of their different categories, and, uh, when Troy Group put together that county application, they only, they really clarified, you know, which projects could move forward and, uh, basically are kind of first in line. Now, if a project falls through, you know, if there's issues, if somebody can't make a local match, or, uh, Ocre says they can't fund it, I, I think other projects may step up, but you know, basically, I, I think the understanding is that if your project was on that original list that was approved and, and Ocre is willing to fu- fund it and you can make your local match, then it's, it's gonna be awarded.
Okay, thank you.
I think you mentioned at the council meeting or in some meeting, also, I mean, the $600,000 of the project was not that large in scope, that there might be opportunities about maybe doing something on the south end of town as we extend.
I mean, this was just, yeah, this was just me, um, kind of thinking through it, but, so that's a $600,000 project, and like I said, the Lions Club in particular wasn't real crazy about the seating. And, and the hardscaping, the concrete and kind of seating area that would go through there, and that was probably at least $200,000 of the budget. If there's a way to coordinate those, so maybe we just did the playground there and then did, uh, property acquisition and some sort of trail-related project in a different part of town, uh, if there's something that makes sense along those lines, I, I think I would, I could see a case for that. I, I could see, you know, if there's not a big public demand for more hardscape in the park, you know, we often hear, keep the green space, keep it green. But would allow us to replace that playground equipment and do something else at another location, I, I think that may be worth trying to get through, uh, Ocre and still get funded. I think the county committee would be fine with that, as long as we don't ask for more funding.
Yeah, I mean, I think the Lions Club does, does great work and great service and, um, you know, are, are very community-oriented. Um, I think the, you know, I don't want to see that drive what happens in the whole park, though, I guess would be my personal on it.
I just don't think we had really shopped that particular drawing around a lot throughout the community and had a lot of input and support for it. Anyway, if we do that over the next two months and people love it, then that's great, you know, I'd move forward with that, but if there's another idea that, like you said, maybe involves two sites instead of just there, maybe that would get a little more support. I, I think that could work, too.
Could make Karen happy and extend your trail to the, uh, school.
I like your thinking, Tom.
Unfortunately, two different kinds of funding.
Oh.
I can't mix my Ocre funding with my NDOT funding. Unfortunately.
I tried, Karen.
We'll find a way.
Yeah.
Hey, Jonathan, thinking about that, um, safe school routes? Would that, that would kind of apply to that kind of, right? And how would that impact getting that kind of funding? Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know that, at least, NDOT, I don't know that they're funding that program anymore. I don't know that they're taking new applications for safer routes to school right now. I think they've moved it all into a different category that still funds sidewalks and trails, but I don't know that it's specific just to safer routes to schools anymore. I think it's all called tra- transportation alternatives now, or something like that.
Since the county, um, road crew participated in the earlier trail project that only ended up being six tenths of a mile, is there an opportunity there to talk to them at least about it?
There's always an opportunity to talk. Is Commissioner Overmeyer on the call? I don't see him.
Okay. All right, I, do we have any more joint business, or, um, I have, uh, 4:45, so we've got 15 minutes before the CRC meeting begins. Bill, would you like a motion to adjourn this joint meeting?
Yes, if there's no more, uh, discussion, uh, and we can let CRC go about our business and doesn't involve the council, is there a motion to adjourn?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Motion was made by Sally, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Sally and seconded by Rich to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Karen, you're on, you-
Mr. Clevenger? Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Ms. Ruchardi? Mr. West?
Aye.
We're at a four.
We're standing adjourned.
Um, thanks.
For, uh, setting up the joint meeting and Rich, thank you for inviting us.
Thank you, Bill. Um, we're CRC members, do we want to, uh, I mean, I don't think we can start the meeting before five o'clock, because that's what the published time is. If you want to, uh, mute or sign off and sign back on, um, your choice. Jonathan, it's the same, the same link, will it work again?
Same link, yep, I'm gonna leave the meeting up, so if you want to just, like Rich said, mute or turn off your camera for a few minutes, or just stay put, or the, the same link from earlier will still work.
I'm just gonna hang in here, I'll just turn off the microphone.
Me too.
Same here.
Yep, me too.
Hey Sally, can you get any louder? It's really hard to hear you.
Uh, I don't know, is it any better if I stand closer?
Yes, that helps a lot.
Okay. I'll try that in future.
You know, just take a, take a nap on your keyboard and you'll be good.
Okay. That's, you may see nothing but my eyes.
I'll screenshot it and save it for later.
Bill's cuckoo bird or, and the, uh, and the-
Yeah.
Clock. That was the other reason I wanted to get off before five o'clock, I didn't want to listen to that.
Yeah. I'd nev- definitely need a break to stretch, so I'm signing off.